My pleasure to welcome everyone today. Let's have our roll call, please. Mr. Hammond, will you do our invocation? And Dr. Johnson, will you do our pledge, please? Let's stand.
Let us pray. O gracious God, our Father, how great Thou art, and how blessed we are because of Your greatness. Thank You for this privilege to serve the people of Pitt County. And we pray that You would bless the board members this morning, and all the employees, and all of the workers of our county, that we might be able to make this a better place for the people to live, and to work, and to play. Thank You for what You've already done. Thank You for what You're still doing. And we are thanking You in advance for what You're going to do. Keep us in Your care and keeping, and guide our decisions that are made here this morning. In all time, amen.
I believe I was right. If you want, let's do our roll call and vote there. Thank you.
Let's face flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion approved of the agenda.
Wait just a minute, Mr. Hammond. Let's get our plan. All right. Now, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, now we'll have our motion, Mr. Hammond.
Motion approved of the agenda.
All right, let's vote. No, Dave. There we go. Mr. Manager, do we have any public address to the board?
Yes, sir, we do have one. Can I give the chairman's privilege to make a statement before we do that?
Please.
May I pass this to the board first? Ms. Ward, if you'll take one, pass it down. Wait a moment till this is passed out. I'd like to read a statement in regards to the action taken at the last board meeting. And let me just read the statement as I'm presenting it to the board. The statement reads, "Regarding the board's action at its last meeting on May 19th, senior management staff," that being myself as manager, our county attorney, deputy manager, who's both, one is the chief information officer and our chief financial officer, "wanted to appreciate, take special appreciation to the Board of Commissioners on your satisfaction expressed pertaining to job performance and special recognition of the management team. However, we do not believe it is in the best interest of the organization to accept the one-time 4% bonus as it is a continuing distraction to the positive work to be accomplished daily at Pitt County Government by the entire workforce. Therefore, we respectfully decline payment and ask your understanding of this decision." This is signed by myself as county manager, Mike Taylor as deputy manager, Dwayne Holder as deputy manager, and Janice Gallagher as county attorney. And again, we appreciate the board's recognition for the work. But again, just feel it's a distraction internally to the organization, and there's too much good work going on for this to, for the short-term implications of receiving a bonus for what we need for long-term implications of the continued success of this organization.
Does this, anyone got any remarks about this, or we need to go on with our agenda? Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Now we go on to the public address to the board. Who do you have?
We have one person signed up. Claridge Al Rice, I believe is the name.
Al. Call me Al. Al Rice.
Okay.
Come around, please. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, how you doing?
Good morning.
My name is Claridge A. Rice. Al Rice for short. I live in 1908 Covington Way. I'm the past commander of Disabled American Veterans for the year 2013-14. And what I've come to talk to you about, and this not only applies to veterans, this applies to everybody that lives in the county and is looking for support. We get a lot of, or we spend a lot of money, especially this year. We help veterans with claims. We help them with electric bills, rent, things of this nature. We get calls for other things. Like last week, a gentleman called me and said, "Hey, do you know any programs where an elderly veteran can get his roof fixed?" "Don't know." "Do you know where to call if a person needs a ride from his house to the VA clinic or the hospital?" "Don't know." And sometimes I try to call the county transportation, and nobody answers the phone. Or if they do answer the phone, they can't give them transportation. Things of this nature. Like I said, we're trying to help veterans, their families. And we spent, I mean, my organization spent a whole lot of money this year. I mean, a whole lot. We went over budget, and we're out of money. We can't help anymore. We did the best we can with what we had. Where do these veterans go? Where do these guys go that need help? Nobody knows. And my suggestion is this. In the military, they have what they call one-stop shopping. You know, if you was coming into a unit or a post, you went to a specific place, and they told you what you needed to do, where you needed to go, and who you needed to see. They took care of everything for you. That's coming and going. And I see a need for that in the county. I just see a need for that in the county because you've got people going, "Put me in, coach. What do I do, George?" So I really, really want the commissioners to come up with some type of resource commission or council or resource office or whatever it is. Like I said, you owe this to the people. You know, we pay taxes. I mean, I'm glad that I don't have to, you know, I'm glad I'm the person that's giving the help rather than getting the help. I mean, but there's been six times in my life where I've had to do that, okay? Well, I had to borrow money from the AER and stuff to keep the renting thing. So I mean, it's not that I don't know how it feels, okay, to be that way. I do, and that's why I help. So basically, what I'm saying is that the city of Greenville has some type of resource board or resource council. And y'all guys need to get with them and start up one for the people in the county. Like I said, there's programs that no one knows about. And I don't, you know, I came from a different state. When I was in my state, I worked for the state, and I knew that, and I helped veterans. That was my job, helping veterans. And I'm still helping veterans or anybody else that needs help. It's not only veterans, it's anybody because that's what the Good Book says you gotta do. So basically, I want you guys to think about a resource council or human resource council, whatever you want to call it. But like I said, instead of trying to look through 20 different or whatever departments you've got, boom, you call one number, you talk to one person, and you get the help that you need. That's all I got to say. It needs to be done. There are people out there looking for resources. The resources are there. They just don't know where to come to. So if you guys could do something like that, it'd definitely be appreciated by the veterans community and everybody else in this county. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your good work for the veterans. Appreciate you.
That's not my good work. It's everybody that helps me.
I meant everybody that helps. Thank you. All right, Mr. Manager.
Thank you for your service, too, sir.
Yes, sir. Number seven, item's report. Couple of things to bring to the board's attention. Your next meeting dates, obviously tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. Pitt County will hold two public hearings. One, the first one will be in regards to the proposed K-9 control ordinance that we've been discussing for the past six to nine months. The second will be on the fiscal year 2014-2015 operating budget. And that will be for the purpose of receiving public comment on those two ordinances. And then, as the board feels appropriate, you may feel inclined or not to take action on either of those two ordinances. Thereafter, the next regular meeting date will be Monday, June 16th at 6:00 PM. In the month of July, you will have only one board meeting due to the Fourth of July holiday, as well as the NACO Conference, which is the National Association of Counties. So that meeting will be on Monday, July 21st. Item B on the manager's report regarding the Mark Pitten Partnership for Children representation. We had a situation on there, but I think we've got that worked out where we've got the needed representative to attend on there. So that was something I was going to have discussed with the board about possibly advertising, but it looks like we've worked that out. So we're, you can scratch that, basically.
All right, sir. Is that it?
That's it.
All right, your next order of business?
Next, we have Timmy Baines, who is the executive director of the Mideast Commission. Would like to come and make a report on behalf of the Mideast Commission, and I believe the services it provides to the region and to Pitt County specifically as well.
Good morning. It's a pleasure for me to be here to represent the Mideast Commission, the Board of Directors, and the staff to talk to you and remind you a little bit about the services that we provide. And then, just to give you a quick report, it's a little bit dated at this point, but an update on the services that were provided during fiscal year 2012-2013 as we get ready to close out this fiscal year. But in your packets, you've all been given a copy of the information that I'm going to speak about and just kind of go through very quickly about the programs that we work on through the Mideast Commission as a resource for all of our local governments. Just a quick update or quick background, just so you'll know, the Mideast Commission is a regional council that is governed, just like you are as a unit of local government. But we were created by a general statute back in the early '70s. And we serve a five-county region, which includes Pitt, Beaufort, Martin, Hurtford, and Bertie Counties. And then, within those five counties, there are 40 municipalities that we also work with. So there are 45 local governments that we work with on various programs and various projects. As you can see there, the main programs of work that I've given you is just to remind you about is our Area Agency on Aging, which is one of our major programs that covers the five-county region. And through the Area Agency on Aging, that is where the federal funding for the Home and Community Care Block Grant, which provides the aging services through the senior centers and various activities, such as senior games, other things that don't really go through the senior centers. Those are funded through that program and through local contributions. Then we have a long-term care ombudsman, which actually works with the residents and their families that are in long-term care facilities to help them deal with issues that may arise and try to help do education for them to prevent things such as elder abuse, neglect, financial abuse, those kinds of things that happen to the elderly. You can see there, we also have a family caregiver support program where we go in and we help individuals who are trying to take care of their aged parents in their home. They typically are trying to do that, and it's a burden on them to be able to continue to work as well as take care of their aged parents and aged family members. So we're able to help them and provide them with some support to help them get through that tough situation. And then, everything else there, you see, the evidence-based health promotions. All of our programs are based on true scientific measures that are designed to help individuals live longer in their homes and not become a drain on society by becoming residents and other things that we tend to rely on through the social services program. So as long as they can stay in their home, as long as they can, they tend to live healthier, better lives, and they stay active. And that's what those evidence-based health promotions are about. And then, of course, with the Senior Medicare Patrol, we have individuals that are trained to be able to help counsel individuals about Medicare options and also to help train them and help them deal with potential Medicare fraud. We do have a community resource connection that is, that where all of the social service agencies are part of a group that actually can help to respond to issues that arise throughout the county and throughout the region by helping to put the people in touch with the people that they need to get into with the community resources. The final, next thing we have under our administration, we do have the ability to help, and we typically help our smaller local governments with some of these things. But we do have expertise available for financial and administrative assistance that we go through when we help some of our smaller local governments dealing with budget issues and other administrative issues, and then also with HR assistance. We also have individuals, it's not on the sheet, but we also have individuals that are able to help facilitate meetings if that need be. Another area of work that we do, we are recognized for community and economic development planning. At the federal level, we're recognized as the Economic Development District. And as such, we complete a regional comprehensive economic development strategy or a CEDS document every five years that helps to bring additional dollars or qualify for additional dollars that we can apply for through federal grant sources that we tend to work with, with EDA, the Economic Development Administration, and other things. We also have under that a small business loan program that we just recently revamped and working with our chambers of commerce and our economic developers in the region to get that word out and kind of educate them about the funding sources that we have available to help small businesses. We also have offer grant research and application assistance and then grant administration. Some of the grants that we've worked on in the past are the Industrial Development Fund, the North Carolina Rural Center, Community Development Block Grant, Economic Development Administration, and Golden Leaf. One of the things under grant research and application assistance that we just offered to all of our local governments this year was a subscription to an online grant resource, research tool that we've been trying to get the word out this year and getting individuals designated to have access to that for researching all types of grants, both state, local, federal, foundation grants, anything that's available out there. This tool is supposed to be available and trying to get the word out for our local governments to have access to that, too. Next, we have, under our umbrella, we also have the Mideast Development Corporation, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. It was originally set up and originally designed to be the owner of three multi-unit housing properties. They're in Ahoski and Farmville. And those are to help individuals, senior citizens, and the disabled with housing options that are available. And then, also, we operate the senior center in Bell Haven in Beaufort County through that nonprofit. Under the planning department, we have capable staff that actually operate out of the Rural Transportation Planning Organization or the RPO. We have two of those, the Mideast Commission RPO and the Peanut Belt RPO. And they handle the local rural transportation issues. We also have individuals that have expertise in helping with regulations, ordinance updates, and development. We have an individual that has a master's degree in recreation and has been helping our local governments with recreational activities and recreation funding applications, those kinds of things. And everything that we've been doing lately has been trying to incorporate the healthy and active living. We've been working closely with the CTG folks and trying to help to incorporate healthy, active living into planning activities throughout the region. We also have a very state-of-the-art, up-to-date GIS capabilities that our staff works on with local governments. Lastly, our other main program that we operate and operated for many years is our Workforce Development Program. That is where you can see individuals that are able to go through and get assistance through the NC Works or formerly the Job Link Centers. Through those, we help to conduct job fairs. We have individuals and working with businesses that we place individuals there that are getting on-the-job training while they're employed. We help with job placement assistance. And that's available for individuals that are either classified as an adult, a dislocated worker, meaning they've lost their job through no fault of their own. Or, and we also have a very robust youth program that works with individuals ages 16 to 21, trying to help them prepare for a better career, better career moves in the future once they get through with school and attain some educational goals. We also not only work with individuals, but we do go out and we're really working heavy right now with the businesses and trying to help them. In the past, we've had what we called incumbent worker grants that were available through the state where businesses can go through and try to get some grant funding to help them train their workers, to help them be and maintain global competitiveness in this environment that we're working in. We also have someone that's on staff that is actually qualified to do job profiling and been doing a lot of that throughout the business community recently, too. Unfortunately, the downside with the workforce development is when there is a plant closure or a major layoff, our staff goes out and helps to work with those individuals as well. That's the rapid response program. So that is one of the things that we hate to have to do, but at least we are able to offer them resources and give them some direction as to how they go. Does anybody have any questions about the programs and services?
No, but appreciate your presentation and very informative.
I've got one more thing. I just want to kind of go over the return on investment statement for you. That's the last piece. Just to kind of give you an update for fiscal year 2012-2013. Again, I know it's a little bit dated at this point, but it takes a little bit of time to gather the data. And during that fiscal year, the dues or the assessments that were paid by Pitt County was $48,343. And the Mideast Commission Board of Directors has, again, approved for that rate to stay the same. There's no increase in that for next fiscal year that we have sent to you as part of your budget process. And then, you also pay part of the match for the Mideast RPO at $5231. So for a total of $53,574, you can see there, the programs and services that were brought back to the citizens of Pitt County in the WIA or the Workforce Development Program, the Aging Program, and the RPO, the Transportation Plan and Assistance that's done, has generated well over $1.7 million worth of services coming back to the citizens of Pitt County. So that shows a return on investment of $33.19 for every dollar that was invested by you as part of our services. So just wanted to give you that update. You can see the numbers, how many specific meals were provided to how many different people, all of those things. But again, and those are done through partner agencies that we work with on a regular basis. So again, just wanted to give you that information, provide the chance if there's anybody that has any questions. Don't hesitate to contact us. We don't want to be a drain on our local governments. We want to be a resource to our local governments. So we appreciate your support and look forward to continuing to build that in the future.
Thank you, sir. Looks like it's a good return for the money. I agree with you.
All right.
Let's, Dwayne.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have a good news item to report to you on this morning. On last week, Pitt County was notified by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada, also known as GFPA, that we have been in receipt of yet another award for excellence in financial reporting for our comprehensive annual financial report for the period ending fiscal year June 30, 2013. We're excited that we've received this yet again. It's the 24th consecutive year that Pitt County has received this award for the benefit of the public. By statute, we are required, all local governments are required to receive an annual audit. But all local governments are not required to generate a comprehensive annual financial report that you'll also hear referred to as a CAFR. This is something that Pitt County has done for several years. We continue to do that. The public can go online on our website, go through departments and services, find financial services, and scroll down to the CAFR link. And it's in a PDF form for the public to view. So, Mr. Chairman, with that.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Also, I'm sorry, one other thing. I do want to give special recognition to Mr. Chris McDaniel on my staff, who works very closely with the auditors and myself in the generation of this report.
It goes for all of your staff very well. Ms. Ward.
I just want to commend you again. This is your first official budget from beginning to end, this particular award, right?
For budget and CAFR, yes.
Yes, all of it. And I think it's another great example, number one, of the good choice we made in hiring you. And also, that we have carried this on with such good leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to accept your report.
Second. Thank you. Thank you, Dwayne. All right, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
So move.
Any question?
We need to finish Mr. Hammond on the first. Okay, that was your first vote.
Ready?
This is your second vote.
Try again.
This is your consent agenda.
Thank you. All right. Number nine. Ready, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. Brad Huffer, and wanted you to come forward.
Chairman Owens, other members of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to present this agenda item. The Pitt County Development Commission is requesting the purchase of a 16.75-acre lot in the Endogreen Corporate Park for purposes of constructing a speculative shell building on that lot. And we have been in the process of planning this shell building for the last several months. And this is the next step on the process to move forward.
Mr. Gash.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that this is something that we have been looking at at the Development Commission for a long time. And all of the consultants that we have had input from suggest that we need a speculative shell building. So we're in the process of trying to make that happen. This is one of the steps. Therefore, I would like to make a motion that we approve this purchase.
I second it.
Any further discussion? If not, let's vote. All right, thank you, sir. Good work. All right. Mr. Holder, I believe you again.
On page 36 of your agenda packet, you have a request, a budget amendment request from the Board of Elections to access some contingency funding totaling $6,000 to replenish some overdrawn line item accounts in their budget. The primary reason or the primary driver behind this contingency request was the unanticipated expenses that were incurred as a result of the PCC GO bond referendum. If you recall, at the time that the budget was prepared, we weren't notified that that was upcoming. Once we carried out the referendum, Once we carried out the referendum, because of that, it did require some additional expenditures, primarily in our salaries line and our office supply lines. So this $6,000 is to replenish that out of contingency.
Do we have a motion?
I say move.
Second.
Discussion? Thank you. Next item, Mr. Webb will handle that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've all read the materials in your handout. Do you have a motion on this?
Move, we approve the request as requested.
Second.
Motion approved and seconded.
Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Elliott?
Yes, sir. Next item on the agenda, Human Relations Council/Commission on Proposal. This is on page 60 of your agenda package. In this agenda abstract and its attachments, you will have found my write-up and analysis regarding this topic. And just to, not to read this word for word, but just to briefly go over the points in the abstract, I did discuss first that this is a follow-up from the board's April 21st meeting, when this agenda item came up, and I was asked then to report back to you regarding an analysis of some of the points on this topic. One of the things I pointed out in the agenda abstract is the fact that you, as a board, have annually adopted a value statement in terms of what this organization values in the services that the employees and the departments render to the public, to the citizens of Pitt County. And some of these values are the following, that you encourage honesty in behavior that is consistent with your mission, recognize and promote competence, excellence, and open communication, support each other in working toward goals, maintain open government that is a good store to public resources, and the support decision-making that is a deliberate conscientiousness and based upon fact. It is my belief that these values are adhered to by you, as the elected officials of the county, Board of Commissioners, and as well as throughout the workforce of the organization. Another point I have brought out in the abstract is that you, as a board, have 47 different commissions or boards that you appoint to in terms of the different services and programs as such that are rendered here in Pitt County. And all of these are for a purpose, and that is the purpose of public service, again, serving the citizens of Pitt County. Back on the 21st of April, I had reported to you on a survey results out of 100 counties, those counties that currently have an HRC, Human Relations Council, and those that do not, out of the 100. I had reported that 10 of them currently have an HRC. There's one that's actually in the process of creating and one who's in the process of disaffiliating in terms of an HRC. A concern was expressed about the municipalities in Pitt County having a voice in items. I bring out in this abstract that there is the Pitt County Mayors Association that meets on a quarterly basis, and Pitt County Government, the chairman, and myself as a manager are participants in the Mayors Association, and we meet. At those meetings, issues, ideas, programs, proposals are brought out through that association. Myself and staff, that being the county attorney and our Human Resources Director, Florida Hardy, did meet and hear a presentation from the North Carolina Human Relations Commission Staff Consultant, Mr. Gene Troy, several weeks back. And I've included a copy of that as an attachment to the agenda abstract, and you also received a copy of this in your weekly packet that gives a lot of good information about what a human relation council is, can do, and does. We were impressed by his presentation and what that can provide. In conclusion, as I say in the abstract, at this point in time, based upon the values that this county adheres to, based upon the fact that you have 47 different boards and commissions, based upon the fact that some of the programs and services that were pointed out that a HRC could address, such as veteran services, such as housing 504 programs and such, these two examples are already handled by the county. We have a Veteran Services Department Office that handles veterans' affairs on behalf of our citizens. Our Planning Department handles 504 housing programs on behalf of unincorporated Pitt County, as well as on behalf of incorporated Pitt County, where those jurisdictions contract with the county for those services. So based upon that, I do see that there are potential for a benefit in a human relations council or commission. However, at this point, based upon what it would cost to staff it and fund it, in my opinion, as manager, determining that benefit would be marginal. And based upon that, I'm saying at this time that I think no action is recommended.
No action having been recommended unless the board wants something otherwise, we're going to number five. I think, purely first, though, we should thank Mr. Eugene James for all of his years of service on the Social Services Board. Mr. James has been on this board since the time when man's mind runneth not to the contrary, and this is just one of his many contributions he's made over the years. What's the pleasure of the board about Mr. James's term expires in June? No, you can't speak now, Eugene.
Motion to reappoint.
Second.
Thank you. Good. Any question? That all right, Mr. James?
Well, I want to do what the board wants me to do, but it would be hackgood to.
All right. You see why I wanted you to be quiet, don't I, Mr. James? Thank you. Now, the number six, Mr. Scott?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a reappointment and appointment to the Greenville Board of Adjustment. This is a follow-up to the last meeting where we were talking about that the city is looking at restructuring the Board of Adjustment. Basically, this agenda item would have you, would be a nomination for Linda Rich to a three-year term that would expire June 30, 2017, and appointment of Jeremy Spengman, if I'm pronouncing that right, as an alternate seat on the Greenville Board of Adjustment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Ward.
This alternate position, could I make another nomination, other than the one that was presented?
If you want to make another nomination, that's your priority.
Okay, I think this was the one that Mr. Coulson was requesting, and I don't know whether he got it. He didn't get it.
That was contingent, if I may interrupt, upon whether or not we contacted the fellow, Jeremy, whether he still was interested in serving. And so, has that contact been made?
Yes.
Is he still interested in serving?
Yes, sir.
And I would say, let's go ahead and let him.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board? Ms. Ward, have you got a motion?
No, I don't, based on what he said. So we can just vote on.
No other nominations, ready to vote?
Yeah.
Correct? Let's vote. Thank you. All right, the number seven.
Mr. Chairman, on that one, this is a deformist to the Pitt County Nursing Home Adult Care Advisory Committee. The Regional Long-Term Care Ombudsman, Tamika Rigsby, is recommending Catherine McCab and Brenda Alexander be appointed to this committee.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to appoint.
I second it.
No others, let's vote.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a statement, too?
Yes, sir, Mr. James.
On this board, it is a very important one. They need additional members, if we can get them. Because, as you know, we have many of these places that they have to visit. And so, if they can, the more they have, the less places that they have to go in and visit. And it's the only time that a lot of these people see somebody to come in to check them and so forth. So I think it's very important that we get more people to volunteer for this. And, you know, we, I believe, Mr. Manager, we said those people that if we needed to pay for their gas, we would pay for their gas for doing the visit, did we not?
Well, we, that topic can come back, if we can identify a source of funds to pay for those.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it would be minor, very limited on that. I thought that we kind of discussed that later in time.
I think that point's well taken, Mr. James. I believe there are some other vacancies on there, so if people would respond in the manner that you request, it'd be very beneficial.
And a lot of these people, Mr. Chairman, are elderly people that own this committee, and their income is very limited. And that was, I'm not talking about, you know, it would be very little. But I think it would entice them to take and come forth. That would be not an excuse if we would pay for that gas.
All right, I believe you've had a motion. If Mr. Hammond, Mr. James, and Dr. Johnson will, no, just Mr. Hammond, isn't it? I can't see. Dave?
Yes.
Now, we're at straight. Okay. Number eight, what's the pleasure of the board on that?
Who are the two that are attending the national meeting?
Commissioner.
I think Lynn and Melvin.
Okay, do either one of you feel directed?
I'll be glad to do it.
Okay, then I'm moved that we select Commissioner McGlaughlin to serve as our voting delegate.
Second the motion.
All right, let's vote. All right, to Madam Attorney, I believe you're next up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11a5 to establish or instruct the public body staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body relating to the price or other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property. In addition, under subsection A6 of the same statute, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, or conditions of employment of a public officer or employee. And thirdly, under the same statute, section A1, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential under the law of this state.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second it.
All right, let's vote.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question on that? I think it's the closed session that has been in the media, so we know why we're doing it, but is it appropriate? Because we're not doing a merit or discussing performance. We're setting a salary potentially for an elected official. Doesn't work for us.
You're still talking qualifications and competence of the person. I recommend you have the initial discussion in closed session if you want to come and vet it out openly, if you're, I defer to the attorney on that, too.
And if I may clarify, it has always been the stance of this board under the law, that discussion of a person's performance or qualifications or justification is kept in closed session, but that any action which related to salary is always done transparently in the public. And any action would have to be taken in open session, and that's been the practice of this board. So to the extent its talk of a number being approved that will be done in open session, to the extent it relates to the justification or the basis for a salary increase, then that would be done in closed session, to protect the right to confidentiality that is held by the employee.
All right, let's, y'all, excuses, please. Now, we're back in open session. I believe the board has some business to do. Mr. Webb, what you got?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the closed session minutes for the May 19 closed session, as to the content only.
I second it.
All right, Mr. Gash?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we change the classification of our Public Health Medical Records Manager from Level 6611 to Level 6615.
Second.
Finish the last.
All right, do we have a second for that?
Second.
All right, ready to vote? Okay, is there any further business from the board? Not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All right, ready to vote? Thank you.